Good evening. Welcome to the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals meeting for December 14th, 2017. We'll go ahead and get started. Can we do a roll call, please?
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Ken Ayers.
Here.
Tanya Hickok.
Here.
Dave Hale.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Dale. He's our new architect on the board. Glad to have you, Dale. Thanks for volunteering. We appreciate it. Has everyone seen the minutes and had an opportunity to look at those? Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, Ken Ayers' motion to approve the minutes? Seconded by Ellen McKay. Are there any objections to accepting the minutes as is? Nope. On to item C, Special Order of Business. Does anyone have any disclosures this evening? And Ms. McKay.
I was not in attendance for the July meeting when the Resolution 2017-004 was heard, but I've listened to the audio and I can participate in the approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe.
Yes, I just want to clarify, I was not at the meetings for 2017-0035 or 2017-0090, but I have listened to the audio on both of those.
Thank you. So you'll be voting as well?
Yes.
Ms. Hickok.
Yes, under case 2017-0135, I noticed while reviewing the case that a relative of mine included a support on page 42. However, I don't have any substantial financial or private interest in it.
So that's the case we're hearing tonight?
Yes.
So it sounds like everyone can vote. So are there any other disclosures? So move on to item D, the consent agenda. We've got two items on there for Resolution 2017-004 and Resolution 2017-005. And do we have a motion on that? Ms. McKay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded by Ms. Hickok. Is there any objection to approval? Seeing none, consent agenda is approved. So I don't think we have any other unfinished business. So items F and G, regular agenda, we don't have anything, so we can move on to item H, which is our current cases. So we're dealing... So we're dealing tonight with case number 2017-0135. So the way it works is we'll get the staff to present the case and all the details and all that stuff, and everyone will have an opportunity to speak. The applicant has 10 minutes to talk and present their case. Other people have, if you're a representative of a group, you can talk for five minutes. If you're just individuals, you get three. We've got a clock, so as you get near, I think it speeds up or something, and then it kind of shocks you, I think, and then you're done. But that's basically the process. And so for this case, can we... Let's see, has... Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The sufficiency of notice on November 15th, 2017, a total of 93 public hearing notices were mailed. Responses were received from the public and include, and the community council included in the staff packet and in the supplementary packet as well.
Are there any objections of the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a variance from AMC Table 2110-6, Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts to allow a garage to encroach 14.4 feet into the required 25-foot side setback in the CER 6 district. I'm going to read through this paragraph here, which is kind of the crux of the variance request. Lot B was created by plat prior to R6 zoning with a lot area less than the required at that time, minimum lot area of 54,450 square feet. Since Lot B was platted prior to zoning, the parcel was considered a legal nonconforming lot of record governed by AMC 215520, which is the old code. Pursuant to that, a nonconforming lot of record established the yard setbacks to those of the zone with the largest lot area requirement within which the lot would be conforming. So the subject property was conforming in the R7 use district with the following minimum yard setbacks. That's a front yard setback of 25 feet, side yard setback of 10 feet, and a rear yard setback of 20 feet. The side yard setback of 10 feet is germane to the variance request. Pursuant to AMC 211060 and Table 21106, which is under the new code effective January 1st, 2014, Lot B is now considered a conforming lot of record, which requires a minimum side yard setback of 25 feet and a rear yard setback of 50 feet. Because of this change in code, the property went from a 10-foot side yard to a 25-foot side yard. Existing property owner placed conxes and began with the intent to construct a garage in 2012, conforming to applicable code regulations in the R7 district for the property at that time. The owner recognized and planned accordingly for the required setbacks. The shipping containers have been confirmed by aerial imagery to exist in 2012. The ASBIL survey indicates the two shipping containers encroach into the required 25-foot side yard setback by more than 14 feet. The property owner did not obtain a land use permit as they were unaware it was required in the Chugiaki River area. The property owner is seeking a variance to finish the garage that they had planned on, originally started in 2012. So the finished garage structure will have an arched roof and siding and paint that matches the residential structure. The department finds that standards A through H have been met. Standard A has been met. The extraordinary physical circumstances of the subject property are the topography and the placement of the structure in a conforming location under the Chugiaki River R6 Dimensional Standards. The petitioner supplied diagrams outlining the change from the old code to the current code in regards to the setback limitations, easements on their property, septic and well radius restrictions. The department finds standard B is met. The strict application of the Chugiaki River R6 district regulations require a 25-foot setback from the side yard, which was previously 10 feet when the owner had originally planned on building the garage. In addition, the rear yard setback went from 20 feet to 50 feet, which impacts the available area to place the structure in a conforming location. Topography of the lot and issues associated with drainage restrict the area that the structure could further be placed on. Detached garages are a common rite of enjoyment in this district and in this particular neighborhood. Standard C is met. Construction began in 2012 where they were going to place the conxes and start the construction of that garage. That was in compliance with the setbacks of the time. The encroachment did not result in actions from the applicant. Title 21 changed the minimum lot size requirement, which made the lot conforming, thus changing the setback requirements. Standard D has been met. Property owner wishes to construct and complete a garage using the two legally nonconforming conxes that will be enclosed, sited, and roofed. Standard E is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. This variance will not change the character of the zoning district, and if the variance is granted, it would not allow a use not otherwise permitted in this district. Standard F is met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the property. The owner is seeking relief to build a detached garage, which is a permitted accessory use in the CER, Chugiaki River R6 district. Standard G is met. The variance is not related to AD accessibility. And standard H is met. The variance for this is the minimum variance that will allow the structure to remain without requiring the building to be reduced in size or moved. Initial construction of the structure began in compliance with applicable setbacks at the time, and changes to the setback standards have necessitated the need for the variance. So the fact that setbacks of the code change, that kind of warrants special circumstances which the department has found all the standards of approval are met and recommends approval of this variance, subject to the two conditions found on page 5 of your staff packet. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions of the staff? Okay, so can we hear from the applicant, please? If you wouldn't mind coming forward, you've got 10 minutes to present your case. And first of all, would you mind stating your name and spell it for the record, please?
My name is Toni Dobson. My last name is spelled D-O-B-S-O-N.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, go ahead with your presentation.
Before I begin, I'd like to please reserve five minutes for rebuttal. And I'd also like to clarify that all the references I make concerning code, nonconforming structures, R6, R7, all that stuff has been newly learned since I visited the municipality on August 21st of this year. Code's confusing for a layperson, and it seems to get even trickier when involving land use. So if I make any errors in my statements, I respectfully defer to the planning people to correct that. We were searching for a home to buy for our family of eight and found 19715 Crabtree Street in 2012...
Could you lower the mic a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. And so you'll have five minutes to present then. We're going to hold five.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
No, that's okay. So we had, we were looking for a house. We have a pretty big family, and we found Crabtree Street in 2012. This home offered a really nice rural setting that we were hoping for, and a huge selling point for my husband was the already developed pad ready to build a garage upon. During the process of purchasing our home, we first became aware of the 10-foot setback requirement when the contractor installing the setbacks, the septic system, was commenting casually on how we almost didn't get the setback placed because the engineer couldn't find a place to put it with the well radius and setback requirement. I mentioned this to my realtor, and he clarified that there was a 10-foot setback required in our area. So at this time, our goal of building a garage took shape. We discussed with our realtor our plans and understood from those conversations that Chugiak was outside the building permit area. The realtor was super gracious enough to affirm that in his letter. He did it carefully, and I appreciate that because it is absolutely not his fault. I'm not trying to imply that, but I want you guys to know where the thought process started for this. It wasn't that we just went renegade. The mistake is our own, and since learning about our violation, we have done nothing but work with the municipality to become compliant. The land use complaint filed against us was received via online per order on August 30th, and that was two days after we explained to our neighbor everything that we'd learned from the municipality regarding the process, the only thing wrong that we had to correct, which was this variance thing, and asked him if he would support a variance since we started under correct code with his full support until our falling out. Two days later, he gave me an answer in the form of a letter stating he was filing a complaint. I hope that this board can see, although I didn't have a permit, I still conform completely to all applicable code in place at the time when I began construction. If code hadn't changed the setbacks on our lot, we wouldn't even be here. The only thing that we would have to do is go pull a permit. We'd be fully compliant. But now we can't. There is no other change that, from the code, that impacts our structure, and we respectfully ask that this variance is granted. We've acted in absolute consideration of our budding neighbors for five full years during the construction process. From the first time they came over in 2012, after we dropped the conxes, we shared our end goal of a garage. We've had several amicable discussions about the 10-foot setbacks on our lot, and it was explicitly declared in early 2013, prior to us leveling and welding the conxes together. We even deferred to our neighbors on where the property line was. Mike's been over every few months for the last five years, privy to every single advance on this project and offered nothing but praise. I personally don't understand, and I deeply regret, how the things have deteriorated with our neighbors. We're also, I am personally greatly saddened at how it has spread among our entire neighborhood. We only seek to gain a permit to complete a structure that totally conformed to code when we began. We outlined the history and documentation of the garage in the application, and since learning of the permit required on August 21st, we followed every procedure the municipality laid out. We immediately ordered a new ASBIL in order to submit a nonconforming determination application. We then addressed and complied with the land use complaint by disassembling the roof that we'd already placed together, a portion of it. We paid for the nonconforming determination when the ASBIL came in, and we had to purchase private aerial photography to establish structures. Now all that has been cleared, and the only thing that we have left is this variance process. The conditions for granting this variance are that we substantially meet the eight criteria outlined in the application. I believe that I did so in my application, and we, I am so thankful, it's almost unheard of, but the municipality gave us a favorable recommendation to be allowed to obtain this permit. I'm very thankful. There have not been any other, I read all the staff comments, there's nothing else negative in the packet from the municipality. And that's my presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Through the chair, to the board, I think it's important to point out the fact that tonight's meeting is a short board, and the petitioner is given the option of a postponement to the next available meeting. I need to point out that the petitioner has been in contact with staff. The option was given to her. She's aware of it, and she's opted to go forward tonight. So I just want to put that on the record, that she's aware of the short board and has opted to move forward.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Whitfield. Ms. Hickok.
What is the proposed height of the garage when completed?
The very peak of the arch. I think it's like 19.8 inches, or feet, I'm sorry, 19.8 feet. The sides are eight feet. They rest on the conex. It is completely under code. Code allows 30 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does the staff have any questions? Thank you. We appreciate that. You've got five minutes left for rebuttal. Six? Yeah. All right, you've got six. So we'll hear from representative groups next. Are there, is there anyone from a group here? Neighborhood group, anything? Okay. We'll move to individuals. The individuals, of course, is limited to three minutes, so please monitor your presentations. We want to hear everything you have to say, but we will have to cut you off around three minutes. So again, please talk into the microphone and say your name and spell it for us, please.
Okay. First of all, for some reason, I can't see that timer, so if it goes off, I can't really see those numbers. But anyhow.
Excuse me, through the chair, when you're down to a minute, it will turn to yellow. There'll be a yellow color.
Oh, I see.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Sheri Massong. I live at 21014 Tonata Avenue, which is the lot directly north of Dobson Archer property. My last name is spelled M-A-S-S-O-N-G.
Okay, thank you. Okay, please proceed.
Okay. I would like to address four of the eight variance standards that I feel should be considered when making the final decision as to this variance request, as I don't feel that those eight standards are substantially met. Under B, although Mr. Archer states he would be deprived of a garage that 91% of his neighbors get to enjoy, the codes do not prevent him from having a garage. In fact, he built a 24-foot by 32-foot pole barn on the side of their house, which extends into the setback area. But that building could have been used as a garage. You can look at page two of the handouts. And in addition, if this variance is granted, then we would be deprived of what actually 100% of our neighbors get to enjoy, which is having their neighbors a minimum of at least 25 feet away from their side setback easements. In surveying our neighborhood in a nine-block radius from our home, the average distance for anyone to have a building near their home is 169 feet, with Mr. Archer's new pole barn being the closest from our home at only 50 feet away. Under C standard, Mr. Archer wants to enjoy his right to have a garage, but he fails to mention that he actually converted their existing one-car garage into living space. Therefore, it seems that his hardship is self-imposed. He also chose to build the large pole barn rather than building a garage in the space that they did that. These appear to be decisions made by Mr. Archer himself and Mrs. Dobson, and these actions are a direct result of how they chose to utilize their property. Under D, I disagree that this variance request meets this standard, which states the variance, if granted, will not adversely affect the use of the adjacent property as permitted under this code, as our property will be adversely affected if this variance is granted. If Mr. Archer builds this domed roof 27 feet away from our home, it will block our sunlight, and it will also be the only thing that we see out of our four south-side windows. You can look at page three and four of the handouts. And under the standard E, unfortunately, if the variance is granted, it will change the character of the zoning district, and it does not seem to keep with the intent of the code. We live in Chugiak in order to have more space between us and our neighbors, but if Mr. Archer is permitted to build the garage only 27 feet from our home, this will no longer be living under the intent of the code, which is stated, "This district is intended to protect and enhance those physical and environmental features that add to the desirability of large-lot residential living. We ask that you please deny this variance request so that we may enjoy the benefits of what 100% of our neighbors enjoy, which is why we moved to Chugiak." Our ranch-style home is 1,700 square feet. This garage will be 1,600 square feet right outside our window, 27 feet away from our home. If it is permitted, it will decrease the value of our house, the appeal, it will block our sunlight, and it will cause us to only stare out at this building. In other neighborhoods that have more condensed living, the builders, and thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Does the staff have any questions?
Tanya has a question for staff.
Sure. Go ahead, Ms. Sorry. Can't hear you.
Through the chair, staff. What is the lot coverage requirement in this zoning district?
Through the chair, Ms. McKay. Are you referring to for the new code?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I said McKay. 30%.
Do you happen to know what the proposed lot coverage will be?
Through the chair, Ms. Hickok. No, we do not, but in the review for the land use permit, that will be evaluated, and of course, they can't exceed the 30%.
Other questions? Thank you. Appreciate your testimony. Are there any other individuals that would like to testify? Please state your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Mike Massong. The last name is M-A-S-S-O-N-G.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
I appreciate the board's time, and will be referring to the handouts already provided. I also wish to bring the board's attention to the last two pages contained within it that were submitted within the past 24 hours. One is a resolution by the Birchwood Community Council opposing this variance, and the other is a letter submitted by yet another established and concerned Birchwood resident. Let me also bring to your attention the fact that out of the five direct neighbors who originally signed letters of non-opposition, four of those have signed new letters stating that they would not have submitted those previous ones had they known the rest of the story and our plight. Throughout this discussion, awareness needs to be brought to page one of the handout, showing that as of May 15th, these conxes were exactly that, intermodal shipping containers, normally movable and temporary. You notice in the satellite image and the photograph that there is absolutely no construction between these conxes, not a single bar of steel, and this is a year after Title 21 was passed. Under these unfortunate circumstances, there are a few key points I ask the board to keep in your mind, foremost in your minds, especially if you're able to put yourselves in the shoes as the affected neighbor. A big consideration is that petitioners still have options, while we, as the most negatively impacted, do not. They still have the option to convert their 24-by-32-foot pole barn, constructed within the last two years, without a permit, once again, into a garage. See page two for that one. They can also still build a 40-foot wide by 25-foot deep garage, still double the size of the average two-car garage, in close to the same position, without the need for this variance, since it would already meet the 25-foot setback. Or they can use their costlier option of moving their intended design to a different location onto their lot. Will it possibly cost them more money and time? Yes, but at least they have options. We do not. Looking at pages three and four, you will see this 40-foot wide structure would be the same width as our entire southern wall, 27 feet away from our house, possibly affecting water drainage as it has already, dwarfing the height above our ranch home, directly in our southern exposure, and thereby taking away any field of rural living intended by the R6 zoning, affecting both the appeal and the value of our home. As with other code determinations, intent is what should drive that determination. In this case, both previous and current chapters of nonconforming uses define their intent as, quote, "to permit the nonconformities to continue until they are removed or brought into conformity with this title, and relief granted only to development that was lawfully established prior to the effective date of this title." I contend that starting construction of a 1,600-square-foot structure long after the code takes effect, and still without a permit, is not lawfully established prior to that effective date. Additionally, 2112 states that, quote, "No additional structure not conforming to the requirements of this title shall be erected in connection with the nonconforming use of land or structure," unquote. If this variance is permitted, even though petitioners did not follow established permits, that would mean that we, as their neighbors, would be the ones who are penalized for their mistake or willful ignorance. Thank you for your time.
Does any of the board have questions?
No.
Staff?
I have a quick point of clarification about construction. What constitutes construction? Can you guys speak about that?
Through the chair, Mr. Hale, this is a difficult question. I would say that from a municipal standpoint, construction would be legal construction, so at the point for which a permit was issued.
So if someone was to move a bunch of dirt around, create a big pad, would you consider that to be construction?
Through the chair, I mean, sorry. There is a definition in code, found on page 1413, 2114040, definitions, and the definition of construction is onsite fabrication, installation, alteration, erection, or placement of materials in a permanent fashion for an improvement.
Thank you. Ms. McKay, you have a question?
I have a question for the... Mr. Massong. Through the chair. How close is, is the common lot line between your property and the petitioner's property a side yard for you?
Yes, so does a side yard from our property, is what I guess.
And how close are you to that?
So we are under an acre, so we're actually smaller than their lot, and when we did our addition on our house back in 2005, we had to go through the whole process where we had to, they wouldn't allow us to get the permit until we applied for the nonconformance. So we got that, and then we, once we had that, we were able to apply for the permit, and so that did establish us as an R7, and we had that documentation for that. And so therefore, our setback was at 10 feet. And at that time, there was absolutely nothing on that property along that entire side of the border.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions? It's like we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other individuals that would like to testify tonight? Nobody? Okay. So does the staff have any rebuttal? Would you like to speak? Didn't mean to miss you. Please, yeah, state your name and spell it for us, please. Please, yeah, state your name and spell it for us, please.
My name is Kenneth Lang. I address 1731 George Bell Circle in Anchorage. I'm not a neighbor to this property, but I am familiar with it. I did an initial survey in 2012 before they purchased it. It was a difficult survey because of all of the junk and debris on the lot. I went back there again in September to redo and update my as-built, and it was amazing the amount of work they had done to clear all of the old stuff. There was a definite improvement to the neighborhood. The only other thing I'd like to mention is I've seen a lot of cases come before your board before, and I've never seen one where the staff actually recommended or found that the petitioner's standards had been met for the variance, and I would urge the board to support it and approve the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Does anyone have any questions? Staff have any questions?
One final comment. I did a quick calculation, and the lot coverage, including the two connexuses and the proposed garage, is about 7%.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward. State your name. Spell it, please.
My name is Sandy Christensen. It's C-H-R-I-S-T-E-N-S-O-N, and I am a neighbor. I live on Jayhawk Drive, which is the road that Crabtree is off of, and I just want to make sure that you guys realize how close that building is and how very, very tall it is, and the feel of our neighborhood. I walk through the neighborhood a lot, on all of the streets with my dog, like, every day, and the thought of someone building such a ginormous structure so close to a house, it's scary, because if it can happen there, it can happen anywhere, and there go everyone's property values. And so, you know, going through the variance process, you know, it's good that they're doing that. The other thing that they seem to be doing, just out of spite, just as a walker in the neighborhood, and I know this isn't directly related, but it might sort of give you a feel for this conex garage, they've newly put up a large fence with... made of some kind of salvaged metal poles that are sunk into the ground, and it's probably about maybe seven feet high, and it's just a black mesh fence that they seem to be trying to enclose the whole property in. And if we all had these giant mesh fabric fences around our houses, it would just not be anything rural. And so if even what I can see just from the road and not even thinking about the huge building that's so close to the property line, it's definitely affecting the whole neighborhood.
Thank you. Do you want to have any questions? Ms. Hickok?
How tall is that fence?
I haven't stood next to it because I didn't want to step onto their property, but I'm estimating... I'm 5'8", and it would probably be at least up to here, so I'm assuming at about seven feet. I don't know the exact height.
Okay.
I have pictures of it, but I have not touched it.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair, staff. Isn't in residential zone neighborhoods, six-foot the maximum height fence?
Through the chair, Ms. Hickok. Yes, but you can get approval to go higher, up to eight feet.
Is there any known requests to request higher in this instance?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything that speaks to the material of the fence?
Through the chair, Mr. Hale. No requirement on the material.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. We've got room for two more. You just state your name and spell it for us, please.
My name is Lorraine Hall. Last name H-A-L-L, and I am the neighbor who is a tenant that is on at 1974 Scenic Drive, and both of the two neighbors' back lot goes the stretch of the yard of my property. I'm also a realtor, and I just wanted to say, from that perspective of a realtor, I did sign both neighbors' letters that they presented to me, not knowing all of the information from the initial letter that I signed. So my only issue is that I just think that Title 21 came about, and as a realtor, I love the fact that we have current building that's being done, and it makes me feel that when I sell a property or when I'm representing a property in any kind of way, that these properties have gone through the necessary permitting process. So that's always a big issue for me, and to have kind of this kind of situation going on where variances are being given or allowed or permits are not being done makes it a kind of an issue for me as a realtor for selling property. So I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that, from the point of view of a realtor, I hope that all of the variance rules and laws can be upheld so that we don't... As realtors, we don't have to go looking for extra information to support this building is where it should be and how it should be, and that is it.
Thank you. Other questions? No? None? Thank you. One more? Please state your name and...
Hi. My name is Yael Hickok. No relation, and we live at the southern boundary of the Archer property at 19619 Crabtree Street. So our house is set up so it's up on a hill, kind of a hilltop, and if it weren't for the thick amount of trees between us and the Archer property, we'd be able to see the property really clearly, but we can't see too much of it, and what's going on is not personally affecting us or our property very much. I just want to speak to them as being good neighbors, who have always been responsible about any issues that might have to do with our property line. We found out after we had purchased the home that we had been given an inaccurate information about where our property line lay, and it turns out that it encroaches into part of their yard and garden, and we were able to verbally come up with an agreement that was feasible, and we've both been able to abide by that. Any issues that have ever come up between us have always been able to be worked out verbally without much problem at all. My only involvement with this structure that's being built is my understanding is that once it's completed, we won't see the connexuses that are there, if that is correct. And that's probably the one thing that we noticed as we drive to our house, is the connexuses that are there, and I'm in support of having those either incorporated or removed or whatever so that they're not visible, and having a more permanent-looking structure would be, in my opinion, better suited or look better in the neighborhood that we're in. So that's really all I wanted to add.
Thanks. Can you tell us your first name again?
Yael. Y-A-E-L.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Back in the back, you haven't said anything?
No.
You're good?
No.
Okay. So does the staff have any rebuttal? Would you guys like to... Good? The applicant, you've got six minutes left if you'd like to speak again.
Before we begin, we obtained copies of the Massong's as-built off of public record. Can we place each one of you with a copy?
Can you speak into the mic? We can't quite hear you.
Before we begin, may I please hand each of you a copy of the Massong's as-built?
That's Massong family as-built.
We pulled it from public record. I did contact Holt and ask permission to use it. He gave us permission to use it, but said that we could not write upon it.
Okay. So you've got six minutes for rebuttal, so would you like to proceed?
Well, everyone, here we are, and I've got a few points I'd like to bring up, clarify, possibly dispute.
Can you say your name and spell it, please?
Yes. Shawn Archer. Archer. I understand, just as the Massongs do, the reason why we like the area. It's a little more rural. There's more space. One of the complaints that they've made is that the distance from their property, this building, will be, if completed, that number just doesn't appear to be accurate. The left corner, if you're looking at it, which would be the northwest corner of their home, is bladed away at, you know, approximately 30 degrees from the property line. Looking at that as-built as it sits, heading east, their property is... Their home is 17 and some odd feet from the property line. The corner of our building, as proposed and as placed right now, is 14 feet from the line.
It's just over.
So 14 and a half-ish, somewhere right in that 14-foot and a couple inches. So this 27-foot number is inaccurate.
It's closer to 30.
It's actually right about 32 feet away, separation between the two buildings. So I don't want to belabor that, but that's just an inaccuracy in some dimensions. Also...
I would just like to interject why that's important. The Massongs themselves are additionally zoned R6. When the code changed, they did not lose their ability to use the R7 setback. Their setback is still today, even though they're zoned R6, 10 feet. Our code changed. We... Michael Packer did the calculations. We have, like, a lot size after you subtract wide away. We lost it by 50 feet, and I get it, there has to be a cutoff. Now our setback is 25. That would make the full separation 35 feet. I know it's an intellectual argument, but even under new code, we were totally compliant under old code and had actually given each other more space, but even under new code, we are only actually asking for a three-foot variance, and it's only for the very tip of one of the buildings, because if you look at our as-built on page 15, you can see that our structure is also slanted. It is a very tiny encroachment of the intent of separation.
Additionally, there is some commentary about this fence. We purchased new materials, not salvaged materials, drove pipe, piling, sediment, concrete, purchased brand-new privacy screen material for that purpose. The fence we erected is not 100% complete down the property line between us and the Massongs. We erected that at eight feet high, in compliance with all regs, as much as anything, a courtesy. This is a privacy screen now. Now, the fence out on the front edge of our property, leading down our driveway, is six feet high, and we opted for a forest-green privacy screen that would more look natural in the area. So that's just some clarifications there, the six-foot out front, eight-foot down the sideline. Yeah, and I mean, the intent of those screens was not as, this is what's going to be here forever, this is what we can afford to put up right now as a privacy screen. The poles, top rail, bottom rail, all permanent. They're going to be sited in, you know, some other material. So at any rate, that's where a few clarifications I'd like to make. Their home is a nice home. They made comment about, you know, our small country living home. It's larger than our home. Not by a lot, but it is. So we enjoy a nice little home, just as they do, and there was some other mentions made about no one in the area has large garages or could need anything this large. The parking area is 24-foot by 40 feet in the proposed structure. That gives 960 square feet of parking. There are many places within just a couple blocks. The property that is directly to the east of our property lines has a garage that I believe is 3,200 square feet.
An attached garage.
And an attached garage of 1,140 feet. So just some comparisons and...
I just kind of wanted to hustle this up because I'm the one that did the paperwork. I really don't want this to turn into a, oh, they have, we have, everybody else has. The bottom line is, in this area, large garages are very common. What's even more common is that people have not only a garage or a detached garage, they also have a barn for their horses. This is a livestock area, and they have multiple outbuilding sheds, wood sheds, snow machine lean-to's. That is the character of the Birchwood area. What we... Our lot is so intensely restricted by topography and utilities, our lot, this is all we get. The parking area in this structure is 24-foot wide. That is very reasonable. The two eight-foot connexuses on the side are storage. There is nowhere else for anything else on our lot. We have a house, a shed, pole barn, however you want to refer to it, and a garage. Just the four that we pulled, admittedly, the Hall's 3,200-square-foot garage is the largest, but on, you know, the other street, there's a 1,600-foot detached garage. That's on Old Cranberry with another... Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you. We appreciate the testimony. Does anyone have any questions? The applicant? No questions? Questions with the staff? Staff got questions? Guys good?
I didn't mean to take that from you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that concludes, unless we have anyone else, that concludes the public testimony, and the matter will reside with the board. So may I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Ayers? Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, case number 2017-0135. I move for approval of the variance from AMC 21-10.060C.3, Table 2110-6, dimensional standards, to allow a garage to encroach 14.4 feet into the required 25-foot side-yard setback.
And do we have a second? Yeah, is it subject to...
Subject to staff's conditions on page five of the packet.
And do we have a second? Ms. McKay, seconds. Mr. Ayers, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everybody's testimony tonight, but I do find that I agree with staff's findings on items A through H in the packet, and I believe that the petitioner has a right to construct this structure on their lot in this location based upon the information contained in the packet, and I would add that I think that when the structure is complete, it would be an improvement over connexuses and equipment stored outdoors. I do understand that the structure may impact the neighbor to the north substantially, but the structure itself would be conforming. Thank you.
Ms. McKay?
I concur.
Does anyone else like to add anything? Does anyone have any questions, or should we just go ahead and vote? And the motion passes. And the motion passes. So thank you very much. We appreciate you guys coming out and testifying. Thank you to the staff for putting all this together. We appreciate everything, and that... That case is done? And we don't have anything else, right?
Yeah. Tell them about, just to remind them of the January meeting. The right to object to...
Oh, you guys do have a right to appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, I don't know exactly what the appeal process, can you, can you guys just speak to that? I would suggest that if you want to appeal, then you'd get with the muni staff and ask them about the process, and they can help you out.
Yes, through the chair, if any member, or any member of the public wishes to, to appeal, we'll certainly give them the appropriate code citations. Typically, you have fifteen days to appeal. You have to file it timely. We could provide you with all that information, certainly.
It says here that for every final decision of the board, clearly state its final decision. You've got, parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution decision to file an appeal to the Superior Court. So, yeah, I'd go talk to Mr. Whitfield, and he can help you out with that. I don't think that we have anything else on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Ms. McKay?
Move to adjourn?
Seconded by Ms. Hickok. Is there any objection? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Right. As a reminder, no January meeting.